Alright, so we're gonna call it for a workshop of the Town West Bath Planning Board. Let's see, it's Tuesday, May 2nd. I think it's 6:35. This is a workshop to look at comprehensive plan. We have four members, which is more than three, so we have a forum. And I think you guys all have the handouts for the comprehensive plan. So, the comprehensive plan is almost... Well, I hate to say finished. We've gotten to a point where we've gone through all of the sections, I think, three times now. What you have there are the first nine sections that are ready for public review and comment. And so, we've, as the planning board, have been given copies to look at. You may get it, because I can see it in the spelling.
Eight, eight sections.
Okay.
I'll go through section eight.
Yes, it's only the first eight. Is it only the first eight?
Yeah.
Well, it's only the first eight. And so what we've been doing for the last year and a half is going through the old comp plan. I actually have a copy of it here, if you wanna look at it. It's very thick. The idea was to get rid of a bunch of the duplicates, that sort of thing. It's comprised of a bunch of different parts. Do you guys have the one that's in draft on the front of it?
Yes.
I think it was like the last one that was sent to us, so I had it in the back. It's got like the cover. Did you find that one?
Yep.
Yeah, the one in the back. And then you flip the page, you get your table of contents. So the part one is the implementation. Implementation, I think, is gonna be the biggest thing for us. Because it's the list of... You have all the data in the bulk of it, and they put it on the inventory. So if you look at that second page, this is part two inventory. And it gives you different sections, there's 12 different sections. The implementation takes all of the tasks from the inventory and puts them in a list per section. And not only lists the task, but if it's priority, you know, now, later, and then who's responsible for it. And the planning board is next to a lot of those.
I don't see it.
Okay.
I think it goes next to it.
Yep, so if you turn the page, like to page seven, and look at population and housing. So it starts out, this is how the whole thing underneath the implementation section is set up. So underneath the population and housing, it has goals and objectives and policies. And then below that is basically the task list. And so you've got ongoing, you've got short term, you've got long term. And you'll see the implementation action and then the responsibilities. So the first one says, "Planning Board." "Continue to allow elderly housing facilities as a permissible use in all areas of town, with the exclusion of the urban development park." That's in line with what the ordinance says zoning-wise. Just one second. So just so you know how this layout is. Anything in here that has an asterisk... You see how the second one has an asterisk before it says "ongoing"? Okay, so for our comp plan, the state mandates certain things have to be in here. Certain sections, certain language, certain tasks. Anytime it is a state-mandated thing, it has an asterisk. So that's asterisk next to it. So we cannot get rid of them. During the process, we asked Max, the consultant from Midcoast Council Governments, a lot, you know, "Is this...can we change this? Is this the state language, or is this just a state item?" And a lot of the times, we've kind of parsed it down and made it easier to understand, or less bulky, or that sort of thing. So we've spent a lot of time on these. So that's really how that implementation list works. And again, it's by every...each section has its own, and they're in order. Alright, so some of these sections don't pertain to us that much, but some do. So like, I think every, every section, there was something that was a land use or ordinance item, or something that they were asking me, "Well, what do you guys have?" So I always had the ordinance there to kind of make it up. And that sort of thing. So I don't know how we want to proceed. Our, our task is to review and comment on things that don't work, don't make sense, aren't accurate, those types of things. We're, we're told that the...any grammar and spelling and that sort of stuff will get caught.
Well, it always doesn't.
Yeah.
Because, you know, if it's a word, it might not get caught.
Right, right. And so any edits that we have, the necessary spellings or something, we're supposed to just send them into them. But what I was hoping to do, and let me know if this works for you guys, is that we would have like one markup to give to the consultant. Unless three of us have lots of markups. We don't wanna spend time to consolidate it into one. But if we just had little things, we could do that. We could just give markups.
Where's somebody coming?
Yeah.
Give you the...get up your red pen and go far.
So, have you guys been able to browse through it at all? I mean, we can take this time to go through each section. If you've all gone through the sections, we can take the time to consolidate. It's totally up to you and what you want to do. And Jim was asking me about it earlier, and I, and I had told him that he's... All of you are more than welcome at a comp plan meeting to discuss your changes. Because I know sometimes, secondhand, it's, it's not the same. It's something that you're really passionate about, so...
We were...you and I, Jerry, went to one, I think I went to the next one or something. So we read a couple of them. The first thing I found on, you know, on the draft was just a spelling thing on page four.
Are you starting? Okay.
And, uh, at the introduction, the third paragraph, it says, uh... Second sentence says, "The town initially approved its first comprehensive plan in 1985."
Yeah.
So that needs a "B."
Yep, right.
And under "History of Comprehensive Plans", I see, uh, there's a comment about to preserve the rural character. And I would definitely approve of that, you know, approve, you know, agree with that. That's an important thing I can still today. And he hasn't...they, you have included it, and I think it's very important.
I, I agree, and I didn't mention this, but, um... Did you guys get the survey that was sent out by the town? Any of you?
Yep.
So we used the survey. You'll hear about the survey in here a lot. Use the information.
Put it in the copy?
I did. I mean, I, I had copies and I...
No, like actually in the copy.
Oh, is it? Um, I don't remember. He said he was gonna put the survey in the copy.
I don't know.
I don't remember. I think there were like summary sheets that he provided.
In the appendix or something.
Yeah, and I shared them with the planning board at one point. No, I did not. I was getting ready to share it with the planning board, and then my unlawful termination happened, so... And then that got reversed, so I forgot all about it. So I didn't share it with you guys, sorry. But I do have it, I can, if you like. But, so, the survey has been incorporated into here, and that's exactly where that language came from. Is that people like the rural, ruralness of town. Is there...it's, it seems tedious, but it's easier to go page by page. Does anyone see anything else on page four that they'd like to change? This is all just kind of the history of all the different comp plans. The one that we've got now is 2005, so...
Yeah, they're supposed to be every 10 years.
Right, it's supposed to be every 10 years. And the big thing about doing the comp plan is that the state does not like it when you don't have one that's up-to-date. So pretty much at this point, we can't...
We don't necessarily get grants.
Right. If you wanna apply for a grant, they kinda laugh at you because your rating at the state is so bad, because we don't have an up-to-date comp plan. So, that's why it went in front of any of the ordinance changes. And a lot of what's written in here is going to dictate how the ordinance changes are gonna go. Because there are state-mandated things in here that we need to do to change the ordinances. So they kinda go hand-in-hand. So this is a good thing to keep after tonight. Because we come back to it, and our consultant for the ordinances is the same person who's a consultant for this conference. It works out really, really well. Very smart to do it that way. So it should be a little bit easier. Okay, nothing else on four? Anything on five? This talks about the public outreach and the, um... The survey that went out to everybody. And then it has bullets below it, like what people had said about it.
That's fine.
Five is good? Jared, Gabe?
I'm good.
Six talks about the implementation section. I guess I kinda explained that. But you've got ongoing actions, immediate actions, short-term actions, and long-term actions. And we changed the order of them because it was kind of sporadic. We had them sorted by ongoing, immediate, short-term, and the long-term per section, so you'll see it that way. We can focus really just on the items that are a responsibility of the planning board, or we can skip this implementation list. What do you guys wanna do?
I would go through in all the ones to the planning board, right?
Okay. Yeah, that might be better than going through the meat of this thing. Because it's all, it's all in there. Alright, so population and housing, so ongoing. Planning board responsibility is...oh, I read this one already. "Continue to allow elderly housing facilities as a permissible use in all areas of town, with the exclusion of the urban development park." And I add, it used to be "allow", and it sort of implied that we don't, so I put on there "continue to allow", so we don't disallow it anymore. Which is good. And so the second and third one on page seven are mandated by the state. And again, the third one on the sheet. "Planning Board Review Current Locations for Mobile Home Parks Were Allowed Pursuant to MRSA 30A and where manufactured housing is allowed." I don't know. We'd have to look into that because...
Do you have a negative factor housing?
No, I don't know if that's an overlay or what. We have to look into that. I'm not sure if that has to be another overlay, because our mobile home park overlay was mandated by the state. So you can see that a lot of these are triggering kind of questions of like, "Oh, really? Need to do something with that." And Max will help us with all of these. He does these for a bunch of different towns.
Is the manufactured housing accepted that everywhere?
I would think so. But I don't know if it's...
But that's, that's a, that's a goal that we would do.
Yes.
So, you know, that's certainly something that's good that we can...
Yes.
We can review that.
Yes, that, that's something that we should...
That's a goal that we have to do.
Right, that's something that we have to review.
Yeah.
And then, turn the page eight. We've got "Long Term Enhance and Support the Development of Higher Density Affordable Housing." This is what LD 2003 is gonna probably cause. "Methods include pursuing programs, community development block grants, reduce expenditure for public utilities, examine possible ordinance revisions for reduced density requirements."
And that's long-term?
That's long-term, yeah.
That's not happening sooner than six years?
Well, so, so this was before this LD 2003, so during it, well... Yes and no. So, "Community Development Block Grants." That would be like a grant, or trying to, trying to entice the developer who wanted to see DVG into town. So you talk about things like grain acres or Solmirets. It would need some, some looking at. So, so yeah, it seems weird because they're doing the density. But this is talking about us trying to make it easier for other people to come in. I think they're hand-in-hand. This was started a year and a half ago, and LD 2003 was enacted less than a year ago, so... I think it's a timing thing. "Provide housing and services for the elderly by encouraging the opportunity for small-scale retirement housing projects." We don't discourage that. A lot of these, I would say, well, how are we supposed to get developers to come to town? They're spending their money. The board and the town really can't do anything besides giving them incentives or whatever, so...
Well, maybe we could though. But that's, that's just, this is something that we, the board, has to do later.
Right.
I think it's a good thing, okay.
Right, right. And again, long-term.
Although there's no asterisk about them, but...
There isn't. Nope. Alright, all set with eight. We go on to like historic and archaeological resources. It seems, it seems like we wouldn't be in there, but we are. "Ongoing for Planning Board. Support the efforts of private historic preservation groups who are protecting sites which have historic or archaeological importance." We talked about this, and it goes with the second one below it too, is that there's a list of historic buildings and places in town above and beyond the Little Dealed School, or whatever. And so, we need the Historic Society to give that list to Jonathan, John, and have him check it when people come in with their applications, much like the Habitat maps, beginning with Habitat maps, which is in here also, to make sure we're not in that habitat and all that kind of stuff.
Is there a present list somewhere?
Yes, and they brought it to the meeting, and...
Section three.
I have it, is it in section three? Oh yeah, because we're in section three, aren't we?
Oh, here we go. Thank you.
There you go, there's the list.
Beautiful. And that's in section three?
Yep. Well, because, oh, that's a good thing. I think that this up top should say "Section Three Historic and Archaeological Resources." I don't even know where we're at. Section two.
Section one, compensation. Where's section two?
Well, I haven't...oh. Section one and two are combined. Population, demographics, and housing? Oh, so maybe we can't...
So, I mean, that seems fine.
I hope you can. Good idea, but it's... We'll see what you can do.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, but that, that language there, I think is fine for both of us first to find what I had on page nine.
Right, right. And, um, you know, we didn't have a list, so we couldn't do it. But now we have a list, so we can, we're kinda doing that. That's ongoing. Then, then it moves on to recreation, open space on the next page. And that is section four. Um, let's see.
So are we doing the sections also with the same band?
We can, I don't know. What do you guys wanna do?
Might as well.
Because we're kinda raking through it now. Do you wanna go back and look at one through three? The actual sections real quick? They're not very long. Like I said, we worked really hard to make this book a fourth of what this is.
Yeah.
So... Alright.
Well, under section nine, then...
Backtrack to section one.
There's a table on one dash four.
Yes. Some of the tables aren't...
And it includes Richmond, Thompson, all these towns. But Arosic is not there for some reason. And I don't know if that's especially significant, but in neither of those tables, that one dash two and one dash three, is Arosic included.
You're right. Was it in the old book, Charlie?
I don't know...
What's that?
She has the old book.
Oh. But I mean, that's...
That's a similar town.
I mean, uh, Westport is included. I mean, it just bleeds right by.
I wonder if there's no data for Arosic.
Well, I'm sure there is.
Get out of Arosic.
But if it's not too much, alright.
Yeah, no, that's a good catch. I didn't notice that.
Maybe they include Arosic, gets to be complete.
That's a good point. And you can see our population went up by like 33 people, right?
In 15 years.
I think it went up and down a lot. Let's see. The, the blue highlight like this is because he's still getting the information from the school district. So like on page one dash two at the top says "Education." It's listing how many preschoolers, kindergartners, grades one through five. So it's, it's highlighted because he still needs to get that. And in our last meeting, we hadn't been able to connect with the, um, school yet. So...any other comments on section one?
Does anyone?
No? No, I see that one.
You wanna talk about section two?
I think so. Gabe, are you good with section one?
Yeah, is it the same thing where the asterisk is the state?
Yes.
Yeah.
All through the entire thing, if you see an asterisk, asterisk, it is state language or state requirement. And it has to be in there, because the state's gonna look at this and reject it or approve it.
How could they reject?
If they think we cut something out too much.
If we didn't have something in there, then they won't in there.
Went first, and then they got stuck looking at it.
Because we're, we're probably a quarter to a fifth the size of the other comp plan.
Yeah, so they're gonna wonder what's missing. We, we, that might be a red flag.
Significant fluff.
Or they might really, really enjoy reading it, because it's no fluff, concise and...
It's trimmed.
Shorter, it's trimmed, yes. Section two, housing. This one was where we had a whole lot of tasks, but it just basically talks about how many houses. Most of it's from 2010 to 2020. Some, some of these, some of the graphs and things, we had them go to 2022. We had the recent information. It went from 2010 to 2020, because when we started, it had them, those 10 years.
So in the first paragraph, near the end of the paragraph, there's a comment. "Code of Weston Oxford Planning Board had firsthand experience witnessing an uptick in conversions as more residents have moved to West Bath since the 2020 data was obtained." And, um, I guess just prior to that, it says, "While the data provided by the Main State Housing Authority seems to indicate seasonal homes are not being converted, CEO of Planning Board had firsthand experience, etc."
Right.
And I'm not sure how it's shown, I guess, but a loo...one thing that... I'm not sure if we wanna even note it in here, but a lot of these conversions aren't for people that are living here as residents. They're people that are converting a house that sees no, like, maybe a cottage farm or...
Yeah.
Just in the summertime or, you know...
Well, there is a thing down here...
So they're not actually residents, so it could affect the numbers and...
You have a seasonal line, huh?
Yeah, I see that.
In the table, there's a "for sale or rent," and then a "seasonal."
But when it talks about these conversions...
Right.
Many of them are not residences.
Right, and I'm not sure if that would be... Part of the statistics is tough, because it might not be data that John has in that sort of form, that he could give them numbers that way. Like to tell you...
What we say is, "An uptick in conversions as more residents have moved to West Bath."
Right. I would say, I would say more.
A lot of those conversions aren't residences. We've seen a lot of conversions, but they're, they're not, they're a seasonal place, not for residents, but for people that are in Florida, Nevada, or South Carolina as residents, not in the town. But we say here, "As, as more residents have moved to West Bath."
So you think it'd be like more people?
I don't know.
Well, so your housing stock went up 10%, but your population only went up 2%. So that's a huge, that's a housing uptick.
Yeah, but I haven't seen that. I'm, I'm just looking at the language.
The verbiage, the verbiage.
As you say, "As more residents have moved to West Bath." And it's absolutely correct that there have been a lot of conversions. We've seen a lot of showing.
Right, and we've seen a lot of people moving to town from out of state
Yeah, but children are residents.
During the pandemic, though. I just don't think that...
Right, I mean...
I don't know how we quantify that, or how you would...is it important to say it? Because if I'm totally honest with you, this is going to the state. The state's gonna approve it, then we can get grants. And I can probably count on two hands the amount of people that are gonna read this book.
Get your red pen away for the moment.
So I'm just saying, I, I don't know if it's, if it's important to you, then you can...
No, I'm just bringing it up, not that it's hard.
I'm not disagreeing.
I have no doubt about, but that's not mine.
Okay. I can't wait to see what chill it is.
Okay.
Okay, so page two dash one. Are we done with that one?
Yep.
Page two dash two. So I don't wanna rush anybody. Just say "all set"
All set.
When you're ready, and I'll wait for three of you and then move on.
All set, all set.
Unless you want to say "all set" too, Suzanne. Suzanne does the, she's done this already. So two dash two, all set. So two dash three, we've got another table. Arosic is not in that one either. Should I?
Yep.
I'm, I'm adding Arosic here. I don't remember, Suzanne. Did he say anything about Arosic?
Was, but did it, did it show for the other information?
No, but I mean, Arosic is Saginaw County. I mean, he didn't realize. It's Woolwich, Arosic, then Georgetown.
And we go to Richmond and, uh, Westport.
Yeah, sort of, no. He can add it. Okay, alright, I've written it in there. Add that.
About 800 people in Arosic. So all set on, what did you say, two dash three?
Two dash three.
All set.
I'm good.
Two dash four. This is, um...affordability index for state. Talking about medium home, private, median income. A lot of these are statistics he's getting straight from the state. And we tried to just...
That's very good.
Make sure that the tables kinda made sense to us, because you know how stats can kinda be weird at times, so...
Which is what's contributing us, this is, this is what makes us a minimal receivership, which is why we get very limited funding.
Okay. Two dash four.
I'm good.
Gabe, you good?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay.
What do you, what do you mean by the limited receivership?
West Bath is considered a minimal receivership. So we get less funding, like the ARCA money. We got $420,000 for the school and other towns.
I think you want to explain medium, minimum receivership.
They consider us a rich waterfront community in West Bath.
Ah, that's interesting.
Oh, okay. So we're considered Shanger Law, but we, but we don't have the, um, Main Street.
Right.
So there's, so there, I, I, one of these days in my spare time, I'm actually gonna unravel that piece, because I don't think we are in that category.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just curious to check.
But, but that affects what we get for school funding and everything else.
Right.
And this, this shows that...
So what was that term you used, receivership?
Minimal receivership.
Oh, minimal receivership.
So where, so if you look at your annual money from that...
Your annual income need, we're at 67...annual income needed, we're at 67,000. Saginaw County is 56, and the state of Maine is 55. So we're significantly...
Why are you reading that?
In table two four. Oh, thousands, I was looking at the index. So you, so you're, so you, we're, um... Yeah, that's what's creating the issue.
Okay. Page two dash five. Talking about the Bath Housing Authority. We included services outside of Bath, uh, outside of West Bath if they were available to us.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Jim?
All right, let this go away.
Okay, two five, what you got?
Well, I'm not really sure what this goes. And I guess housing is the best spot there, just for my comments on this, but...
Okay.
We, uh, over the years, I've observed that there are a certain number of houses that are... Oh, how shall I describe it? Are, are getting more and more decrepit. And there's more and more debris in the yard and this.
Right.
And you can see, obviously, people are struggling, you know?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, the law is outmoded and this kind of thing. So, I guess somewhere, I mean, this comprehensive plan would be nice if somehow we could put something in about... So I guess somewhere in this comprehensive plan would be nice if, if somehow we could put something in about helping these people clean up their yards or put roofs on or you know, side the house or, uh, put a new footing under the porch or whatever.
Remove debris.
Well, so I came to the select board.
And I don't think they'd like to have the debris around. But, um, so, I mean, there's two, two, two ways of looking at that. One is to, you know, encourage people to clean up and fix up and so forth. And what the ordinance could do to encourage people to do that. And the other side of that is what we could, what the town could do to discourage the storage of junk and discourages a house being rundown and all of those things. But, but the bottom line is how, uh, there must be funds from the state that would allow people to put on new siding, to put a new roof on.
So.
You know, in these, some of them are just kind of falling down around us.
There are opportunities, the town, the thing that I sent to you, there are different towns that have, um, people who volunteer. They have people who fund this and then they have people who volunteer to go help elderly people with ramps, uh, ADA access inside of their homes, fix a leaky roof, all that kind of stuff. I forget what they call them. And they, they work in Pittsburgh, they, they do all in this area. For whatever reason, it's never been a thing that the selectmen has, have wanted to erase and.
There's, there's a lot of places that go into all this. So, so here's, there are places that have, um, so the ordinance is you know more than two unregistered vehicles and then you're in.
Ours is three.
Two.
It's two, I think it's two.
It's two.
Two unregistered. That, for the thorough.
You're only allowed two.
So, so let's, so let's, so here's, so then we, we looked at, and I was trying to figure out, because we have received a complaint on kind of what you're discussing. So, you know, there's some things they can have, so you could, and they could, we could help them get that car towed to a recycling facility and get them to order to do whatever, it's a van, four hundred, so here's the catch. If they're back in child support. So there's all these pieces that fall into the claiming of that car and how, and then, and, and what happened. So it's not as cut and dry as helping them remove a decrepit vehicle or some of the things. Or what, what someone would consider too much exterior items, others consider that is how they want their house to be. So it's, there's, there's, so you can't dictate. We can dictate the number of cars they have because there's an ordinance. But there's very few other things that turn it into something other than that.
Does the, uh, does the town control, um, whether a junkyard?
We do have, yes.
So there is a junkyard ordinance?
Yes.
Yes, but.
It's a state ordinance, it's a town.
So that would, that would come under the, discourages the deposit and storage of junk in people's yads?
But so, but yes, and we, and we try to incur, but we're trying to find a, um, a happier solution, helping them get that car to a junkyard. But then if they owe child support, that it's stopped right there because if that car is no longer a tangible asset, it becomes a ward to the, there's pieces that go
Oh, yeah.
beyond just the removal of a car and doing a good deed. I guess it's a way to put it.
But it'd be nice if there was something that could go in this about housing or, or somewhere in the ordinance about this phenomenon that's occurring.
So there's two.
Because in the last 20 years, there's been, just in the first mile of the First and Foster Point Road, there's been
Significant.
An addition, significant additions.
So, so there's a couple, so this year, which we haven't had in several years, we had a, um, I think a hazardous waste cleanup two times, one in Bath and one in Brunswick. You can bring it, we, we're contributing as a town to allow our residents to bring their hazmat items, paint or whatever they want there.
I didn't know that.
That's happening in the spring and the fall or either summer. I, so, so that's something that we're, so we're moving towards that.
Has that happened last year?
No.
Okay.
Um, so we, we allocated funds to do that.
Good.
For two towns. So in theory, depending on how that goes, maybe we say, okay, now we have a junk day and by this date you put all your stuff at your mail box and we go and pick it up and dispose of it.
You know, it's interesting, like if you live in Georgia and you, anything you want to dump, it's free. It's always been that way. Like why can't West Bath do that?
Georgetown pays for that. They have.
Right, but why can't we pay for that? If, if people wanted, people could.
We could, and yes, and I'm, I mean, we're, I think we're stepping in that right direction. We have a hazardous waste material cleanup. We could say, depending on who participates in that, we could say, okay, um, you know, May 5th or the first Saturday in May, wherever you pick that day to be will be, um.
Free dump day.
Free dump day. And you, and you, and you just put it even out, you can even take it in the dump, just put it at your, at the end of your driveway and slap this sticker on it and it goes to the dump.
I think that's bad because everybody just goes from one person's day that gets all their stuff and then.
But the, but, but it's, but at least, because if they don't have the capacity or the strength to get it done, we just go at that and you boop, boop, boop and go around the town and, so there may be a way to do that, but I don't.
That's right, Jerry, that eliminates the refrigerator dump aside the road, the couch dump aside the road. It eliminates that thing if it's free for people, at least.
Someone took it.
Most of the time, somebody.
My husband's been picking up the stuff on Berry's Mill Road for the past six years and he's been refrigerated washer, dryer, the couch, he takes it and takes it in the dump. He, he, instead of, he just.
And so like when he does something, it should be, like I know somebody that did that too and like they, they get charged.
We told that it was on behalf of the town, he didn't get charged for it. But there's a way, there's a way to accomplish what you're doing, but I think we could take it, depending on how this cleanup goes, maybe a separate.
Sure. So what we're talking about is comprehensive plan tonight certainly.
Yeah, right.
But if there was, so that's, you know, I'm not sure really what kind of stuff has to go, but it'd be nice if there could be something in there to encourage the cleanup of property for people and to, and then discourage.
I think that that's something that really needs to be taken up with the selectmen and they need to have a plan on how to do that. I don't, I'm not so sure that's what goes in a comp plan because a comp plan is really.
Comprehensive, I mean, it does say comprehensive, right? Comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think, when's the next meeting?
Is that Monday?
Monday.
No, the 22nd.
It's not next Monday? No, it's the 22nd. So the, the meeting is on the 22nd, so Monday. Come and talk about it, come and talk to them about it. Um.
Well, I'm talking with you right now as my representative.
Right, and, and I have a personal view that I think that we should have something in town that people know about so that they can get help if they need and want help. I'm not big on mandating that people clean up their yard.
Or have someone come and tell them.
Or have someone come and tell them, you need to clean up your yard. I don't personally like that.
That was presented, that put, that was, came to the select where they wanted, they gave us 10 houses to go.
Couldn't it be like a public service announcement that goes to everybody?
Yes, if, if it's available.
Yeah.
And so, but so it's, if someone's, if someone's, someone's aging in place and they just can't do their lawn anymore, so they call and, and you hook them up with someone who's willing to do the lawn and maybe it's some kid that wants to do it for 30 bucks or something or for free. I think that the service of that is, is absolutely awesome. I wish that we had that in town.
I think it's very easy to implement on the homepage too.
We've got people, you know, my husband does water work. We found out after the fact if someone in town just could not pay and was without wat- without water for a while. We're like, hey, someone should have said something, he would have gone and fixed it. You know, stuff like that. We've got enough people in town that have enough skills that they could volunteer time and, and the town could pay for materials or whatever and have some sort of fund.
But something happens in this.
I really think we should have that, but.
But there's, but I think there's, I don't think it's, unfortunately we're down to the wire with the complaint. I don't know if it's something. And Jim, I would encourage you to come on the 22nd. But it, it's easier for you to say it from the general public than for one of us to bring it in after the fact.
It's, they don't have the passion about it that you do, so I don't.
It, I think it's important that other people than the committee participate if they want to see a change.
Right.
Because it's, 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 it shows.
I'm, I'm participating now and, and so I'm glad for having this discussion tonight. This is good. We need to have more. I'm not sure what a planning board can do necessarily. Uh, but as you go through this complaint, just keep that in your mind. I, I'm not that familiar with the whole complaint. And I don't know kind of where any of this would fit, but, uh, this is, and the housing, I guess, is where I decided I would bring it up.
Um, it might go on a land use because there's a whole land use section which you don't have here.
I'll talk about it in a minute also.
We just finished looking at it at the last meeting, so it hasn't been fixed up yet. So land use is like 12, isn't it?
It is 12, it was last one.
So this is one through eight. Eight, so it's 12. So we still have another.
I can appreciate it and I, and I like where you're going with it. I don't think it's, unfortunately we'll make it into this round of comp. But doesn't mean it can't be put into a, a wishlist for the community on the website.
Right, the ordinances which haven't been started yet, so.
But I mean, we, we, I think a good test will be how many people participate in the hazardous waste.
Well.
And that'll show people that are interested in, in getting rid of things, I think will help us.
And so many in organizations started.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't mean that.
No, we just started at the same time. Um, there's, there is an organization out there that participates in Bath and Woolwich and Arosik and whatever to do handyman type of things and handywoman type of things to, to help people out. I just think no one in the town has ever reached out and said, hey, we're interested in this and we'd like to be able to provide your services. What do we do? It's not like we have to start our own thing. Someone just has to reach out to them.
Well, one of the first steps is discussion session, I mean, also this is really good.
It is, you know, and, and it might take care of half of what you're seeing if someone has that available to them.
Well, I mean, you can see, I mean, I, I don't, personally, I mean, I, you know, I'd like, I'd like to think everybody keeps pride in their own town. You know, uh, you'd have a nice big sign like, you know, welcome to West Castle, pretty is a village in Maine, you know? Our sign goes, West Bath.
No, now it likes.
We don't have a sign.
We do, we have to go and see a new digital sign.
I think it's out on the, you know, US route, but that's, that's another subject. But there is also something in here about, uh, participation by citizens and to encourage that.
Yes.
And we need more of that.
Absolutely.
You know, and so
I agree.
I think the more people that are involved, the better. So I'm all set on that.
Okay.
Housing.
Are we good with housing? Right, off to section three, which is historic archaeological resources. Was that where we decided to stop and go back into the sections?
Yes.
Okay, so we're looking at the implementation list. We did the first page already. Oh, and that was it. So section three starts out, all of these sections start at the background. Um, this was primarily written by the historical society. So they took the old section and edited things, added things. Um, and I think in the meetings, we looked it over, but we pretty much gave them free range.
Yeah.
Some pretty interesting stuff in here.
And I think they also took out people's certain names that were.
Yeah, there were, there were anecdotal stories about certain people in here. We kind of just took names out to protect the innocent. What was that, yours next, Jeremy?
Yeah.
Page three dash four left out a T in the top.
Page four left out a T.
In the top, uh.
Oh, yeah, Mitchell. Yeah, it's funny, Max isn't from this area. He had trouble with the names.
Reading IDs and crossing our Ts, you know, yeah.
So, so this is the list of the historical buildings and places it, did we say for this to be a tool for us though, we need to know like what map and lot it is. Right?
Yeah.
So if you're doing next, something next to the David Ringhouse, where is that? No?
Well, there's certainly room to add that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking, I was just thinking from a procedural standpoint, how would we know that we were anywhere near it?
Well, what happens if you put it in the bracket right after a name?
Yeah, we do that. We just do map and lot.
Whatever, page, whatever. So you're not, you're not changing it.
Cause it says the street at least, which helps you, but Berry's Mill is pretty long.
Yeah, that map and lot would certainly be helpful.
You can do it like in a parentheses, so you don't change the word bracket as it's today.
Right, and I mean, like little, all of them, Littlefield School.
I'm all set on two dash four.
I'm good.
Yep, we got the T, the Mitchell, small school. From the house. Alright, so three, four is good, Gabe?
Yeah, I'm good with three, four.
Okay. Um, and then. Three, five.
Couple things jumped out at me. One is the, the comment about, uh, the previous way down the first paragraph that says, uh, from the town through such means as conservation easements or assistance on seeking tax abatement. So.
Where are you?
Halfway, actually, that's.
First paragraph of the book.
Halfway, okay, could it include working with landlords and preserving historic farms, farmland in exchange for some benefits from the town?
Yeah.
And or assistance on seeking tax abatement.
Right.
So is, is that referring to, if you do have a conservation easement on your property, your.
You can get it.
Tax of.
Yeah.
Is that on our website as a, under the assessment that conservation easements?
That was part of, um, right here at the bottom, no, that's recreation.
There's something about talking about doing near land. I think.
Recreation and open space, it's in section four at the bottom of the, um, implementation list. Use available communication forms to publicize, oh, that's recreational activities. Wait a minute. It is in here somewhere.
And I think it's also in land use.
So what?
Section 12 for some reason.
Yeah, I think it's in land use also. Um, to make readily available information on, because there's tree growth, then there's conservation easements and open space, and then there's another one.
Well, good, that'd be, that's one.
Agriculture farming. So you get, you get tax rates from all of those. So yes, that, that is in there, but.
Okay.
What is the, what is the point of that second paragraph?
The MAPZ identifies climate change as a potential threat to key historic or prehistoric places. Um, because the waters are going to rise and since Maine has got historic places that are on the shore, I guess they think that they're going to get flooded.
And they're, they're just stating that it's a trend that they think the water's going to rise?
Yeah.
And that's a Maine historic association, it's not, uh.
Yeah, that's from a Maine historic.
Preservation.
Preservation. And, and it's, they're more like, um.
The Shell mid.
Yeah, the Shell mid and, and like Indian, um, the camp that's along the shore kind of thing.
Okay.
So water rises, they'll get buried, I don't know.
So the last sentence on three dash five says, state subdivision statute requires review by municipalities on impacts from proposed subdivision on historic sites.
Right.
So that is, I don't recall ever talking about any historic site or archaeological issues on any subdivision we've approved.
So the subdivisions usually, we didn't have a list of historic sites, so it wasn't something that we were looking at. Subdivisions have to, if they're going to hit stormwater, which most of them do, go to the D P and the D E P checks for historic and for that habitat and all that kind of stuff, which is something that we should have been doing all along.
Should we, uh, include something in our ordinance about, uh, that being the historic sites?
Yes, but then we have to have a list of them as well for John Chaff.
So that's.
Well, right, we do in that section three.
That, you can have, it's saying we're retired.
But then to talk about land, historic land, subdivision.
Well, the prehistoric archaeological sites, saying the entire New Meadows River is shoreline. So that's common knowledge, like a document, you have to go through all the Indian tribes.
Right.
Right.
And you have to get a letter from the store, a letter from a historic site as well.
Right.
When you go to the D E P, they ask for that stuff.
Before you send a D E P, alright, you have to get that.
Get a letter from the store.
And you have to get that before you send it.
Yep, yeah, I have to do that. So we have this list now.
Yeah, that's not what I got.
Yes, we have this list now and, I mean, along the edge, I see what you're saying, but along the edge of the New Meadows is all within shorelands, you really can't do anything anyway.
Right.
Within the 75 feet. So you can subdivide, but you can't put a building within the 75 feet.
Right.
So that would protect all the shore.
Right now.
Right now. Right now. Oh, it's just gonna get really fun, isn't it? Right.
So we have to, so I'm good on, um, three dash five.
I'm good on three, three dash five.
Okay, three dash six.
And I'm fine with three dash six.
And I am also.
Yeah, so you see the very last paragraph. Municipalities put in place methods to review all construction and ground disturbed proposals in designated historic and archaeological areas. They're prepared to be contacted by the West Bath, by West Bath for its expert review and opinions to assist the town in preserving and protecting the historic and archaeological resources. So we should really, there should be an item that, underneath there, the hat. Implementation, oh, it is, sorry, it's the second one, under the historic and archaeological resources. Okay.
Should be another two, that's anybody that applies for the, uh, peer, uh, quote.
Oh, yeah, anything.
Has to have a lot of public main historic preservation.
That's not, that's not us, that's John.
Yes, that's right, that would identify a historic.
Maybe it pays that to have some of each of the tribes get their own payment, right?
Yeah.
No, you're right.
My neighbor just did it, we got quoted.
Yeah. So I guess on page nine of that, of the implementation, shouldn't underplanning board should be CEO also?
For which section?
The second one, or use a site's general review process to identify potential impacts to sites of historic or archaeological importance.
Yes, it should.
Because he's the one that's checking all of these things before, before we go to the meetings, correct, Suzanne?
That is correct, that is the plan.
Okay, so you're gonna add the CEO to that one.
Oh.
Yep.
Recreation and open space.
Recreation, recreation, open space, so on the implementation list, we got the second one. Work for the state and the town of Bath and Buzzard to explore continuing the Route One bike path through West Bath to Bath along the state road and/or New Meadows Road. Right now, they're proposing to do a trail along the highway, and I don't know how that's gonna work, I've seen the plans.
Oh, cool.
And that's why we added and/or New Meadows, well, it's and/or New Meadows River, so they wanna go down the highway and along the river. I have no idea, so we'll see.
To the bridge?
Well, they're gonna have to take land along the highway to do that. I mean, most of it's off the, off the ledge.
They've left the limited right away, probably, right?
It drops off.
Well, the right away is still up there.
Yes, you're right, we just have to go.
Yeah, is, is this, so now it follows.
Yes, it seems.
Sure.
Obsessive, but, um, oh, sorry, there's a second page, so page eleven on the implementation, we've got, um, nothing on that page.
So on, on page eleven.
Yep.
Um, what came to mind for me is that it lists these locations and so forth, but, and I think the town has done this, have they inventoried all the town properties that the town owns?
I've been pushing that, there are twenty-five properties, we have a couple, we do have twenty-seven acre reward parcel. We have, um, the town owns, um, we have a, there's, I'm gonna say about seventy-five acres of tax-owned acquired land that could be repurposed.
Is there a list?
Oh, yeah, I gave it to Max, there's twenty-five, I'd, I'd be happy to send.
Can I get a lot, yeah, can you send me a copy? I love a little noise.
Sure, happy.
Good, thank you.
Buy that twenty-seven acre piece real quick, or we could return it to a park and let's go.
Or a solar farm, right, that seems to be.
Or a water, one could have sold the one to water farm.
Oh, no, that one, I heard that one was no good.
You need one in your field.
I heard that one's no good.
But I do.
So we're on page four dash one, which is section.
Yep, so four dash one, we're on section four.
Is there a parking area or something at the Bull Rock Ranch?
There is, that's, um, we have to address also, cause the neighbors are putting their boats and ramps there, but it's, it's the town's property, it's not for their storage, so yeah, there was one there as well.
Yeah, it says Sabino boat ramp only offers on-street parking.
It actually doesn't, that's, um, we're working on that, they hired a surveyor, I'm not sure where that ended.
All right, so should it?
Which state?
For Sabino, um, they took away the parking permits because there's no way to enforce it because we don't have the police. But you also can't park on someone's front lawn, so I'm not sure, or it was surveyed.
A Bull Rock boat ramp is.
Bull Rock has a parking lot.
So that, that is an incorrect statement, and these boat ramps are available for public use, it's Sabino boat ramp only offers on-street parking.
Yeah, that's written weird, so it should be only the Sabino boat ramp.
There are three color bands in there, and boat ramps available.
But, but there's also parking at the, at Bull Rock, right.
Is there parking at Mountain Road?
No.
No, it's red, there's nothing, it goes to, it kind of ends in the water with the width of the road.
Right.
So maybe we add Bull Rock, um, Bull Rock Landing.
It's, and it's not Sabino code, is it?
Yeah, includes.
Milcode.
I'm not sure.
I don't think it's called Sabino code, I think it's called Milcode.
Bull Rock.
It's in between.
But I don't think there's a Sabino code label, I think it's called.
Oh, no, there's no Sabino code.
They're calling it location Sabino code.
Yes, there's no Sabino code.
It's Milcode, isn't it?
I don't know what you'd call it.
I think it's Milcode.
I don't know, locals have a name for it, I don't know what to do. I guess I'm supposed to be local, but I don't know, I don't know what the name is.
It's on Bath, a brand new awesome, I don't know. I couldn't say it. I think it's called Milcode, it's not Sabino code.
Well, Milcode goes all the way up, up in there. You know, that goes all the way to Penicens, it's Milcode.
I don't know.
Which is actually where the twenty-seven acre.
Uh, yes, okay, so.
Yes, what the parcels were, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Digging.
Okay, so that's, um.
I don't think it's Sabino code.
It's labeled Sabino on here, but I don't, it doesn't say Sabino code, it's labeled Sabino, so maybe that's where you got that from.
Maybe they should put in another column, Bull Rock ramp location, and then say parking, yes, no, yes.
I could go with.
There you go. Parking, all right, so Bull Rock is yes.
Mountain is no.
Mountain Road is no. They're saying it's on-street, um, and we got a question mark.
Question mark.
Okay, I like that, and a table, tables are better. Good catch, um, anything else on four one?
No.
But then it not, address, you need to address it, you're gonna put a parking address, a sentence before it. Cause then you don't have to, just take out the Sabino boat ramp only offers on-street parking, got it?
Okay, extra stuff on four one, anything else?
The, uh, that list of twenty-five properties, that, that would be something that could be listed on the website too.
It should be. There's eleven, of the twenty-five properties, I believe there's eleven cemeteries, there's a school, the firehouse, so there's some legitimately owned land and, and we, we even say, in the printing of this comp plan, there, the town had acquired X amount of acreage through tax.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, yeah.
There's, there's a couple ways to say it, but I, if we're, I, I think we should list where they are, if we're gonna list where the historical sites are, or list where.
Yep.
The town, I think we should list the address and everything.
There's, and actually, this is, uh, oh, it says developed recreation, so there's other, like you said, there's one off of King Point too, that the town owns.
So there's.
But it's not developed.
But that, but that's, um, I, I thought they sold that.
No.
So that's something that should also be available to either a neighbor to acquire a butter.
Well, the select board voted to keep it.
When?
Before your time.
For what purpose?
For access for commercial, commercial, commercial worm harvesters and clam harvesters.
So then why are they open Sabino?
Yeah.
Just curious, is Sabino music? So, I don't know.
You guys have anything on four or two?
No, it's.
Thank you.
The top, help me with the top paragraph, it says there is one public access park in town. And it says there's also a preserve, okay, twice in this only one.
What's the public access park?
Hamilton Autobahn, the Autobahn.
Oh, yes.
And then the other one said Counter Estuary Land Trust.
That's good, I'd like, any point from sort of, yeah, it's, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Haven't you said the Hamilton Sanctuary is the one public access park?
It does say that, I mean.
No, start out that way, cause it flows better.
When people put the beginning of a sentence in the middle of a sentence, it just creates weird. Yeah, I think it's boring, um, okay, so four, two, anything else? All right, that's section four, moving on to section five, economy. On the implementation actions, the very first one, immediate, amend the ordinances and standards for new applications based on intensity and location. Which is what we do.
What do they mean by intensity?
This is weird. That's a state one, the language, I tried to get that changed too, it's not, intensity, like, I think density.
Where, where is that?
Uh, the top of page twelve.
The immediate?
Yeah, the immediate, the very first one on page twelve. And I think it also means like the size, so a small garage for a salon versus, you know,
Do they mean density?
No, it's, I think it's, it's the amount of development.
For the first one?
Yeah. Intensity makes fun.
It doesn't make sense.
No, I'm gonna, I know, it's a, all right, I'm gonna circle that, and I'm gonna have him see if we can word spit that, okay?
How does it say utilization and location?
That makes sense.
It's a starred one, I think, so we went over.
There's things that we can change in them.
I know, I was probably, I'll ask him again, I'll ask him again, so then, um, two, then there isn't anything else on that at all, if we go to the actual section and look at it, there's five dash one. This talks a lot about work within the community, all that great stuff. Railway Farm. Anything on five one?
I'm good.
Okay, Jim?
I want to go under the, I'll click here and get them.
Okay, five two is sort of a bullet list of all the things that five one says. Okay, employers, businesses, just different economy stats, this is all mostly from the state.
Heard N W S U got bought out, that it's no longer, it's Colby.
Colby and Yale.
Yeah.
Yep.
Is it? So we should change that here?
I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's really the real name, I don't know.
Well.
I know it's bought.
They're still going by N W S U.
Yeah, it's still the same name.
The track company says Colby and Yale.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Was that the, right next to, um, the, 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 the station thing?
Yeah, the, yeah, the, I mean, like.
But I still think we're losing N W S U name. Oh, is that coffee on, oh.
Should we add American Steel to the rest of the board?
When's his timeline, what's his timeline, is it gonna be current as of June twenty twenty-three?
Oh, right, that's why it's not in here.
That's why it's not in here.
Yeah.
But we did other things that went to twenty-three. Did anything else come in here other than him in the past two years?
Nothing of, of largeness, of significance.
Well, I think, it'd been twenty, what about like Derek's whole thing up there, the whole dock business?
But he was mentioned as it.
But that was, that was in town, he bought a company that was in town too, right?
Well, it was in Bath.
No, he built his building.
It was in Bath, right, that herb used to be in Bath.
Oh, I thought he was on.
This is looking at largest employers. I think that's why American Steel is on, it's like five people over there.
Oh, that's why it's not on here. I think there was a minimum qualifier for employers.
I don't, I don't know why it's on there, whether it was the date or the number of people.
I know it's a number of people, cause I brought that up in the meeting, I think that's what they, what they did.
Yeah.
Um.
All right.
Everybody mind?
I got one quick typo.
Sure, what's up?
Five two.
Yep.
Uh, third line down, occupation should be make up, the second largest, instead of makes up.
Third one.
Third one down on the top?
No, from the bottom, economic characteristics.
Oh, yeah, 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 occupation, make up.
The second largest deployment.
Yeah, I've got the S, okay, good catch.
Wait, wait a second, on the last one.
At the very bottom.
Economic characteristics.
Four, four lines up, in the bottom, in the middle, occupation, make up.
Oh, make up, okay. So, um.
Is this on five one or five two?
Well, I think, I think, I think the town's missing the vote.
On?
Well, um, in this ordinance, it could be that, as I was reading it, that, um, you know, we are like the connector between Bath and Buzzard. You know, old Route One is the business, you know, connect corridor. It, the business corridor, and it talks about that.
Right.
Uh, but if there's an opportunity for some grants or whatever, to study that and to try and improve that for those businesses and to attract other businesses in, um, I read about in, uh, in Falmouth Foreside, cause it's, that's a totally different town.
Yeah.
But, uh, all the businesses ran together along the town, and they've done a whole bunch of infrastructure improvements along Route One over the years. And so if, you know, I'm not sure we could ever be at Falmouth Foreside, but we'd wanna be actually, but that, 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 that business corridor is something that's, I think, of high value. We need to do something to, to encourage people to invest in that area and, you know, I think the first, the first step would be to really to get some people involved, to study that and to come up with some ideas on how to do that.
I think we have the largest per capita, per community car repair, car repair place in the state. There's one after the other, and that.
Our, our issue is sewer, our, our issue is sewer, and Christine has said that she's talked to Bath and Brunswick and neither one of them wants our sewer, so we would have to create our own trigger plant and all the rest and spend a lot of money for that, for any high intensity sort of stuff.
But that's, that's one of the specifics, but the larger issue is to, to come up with some, you know, to involve some people to come up with some sort of plan that they corridor, and that's something that might, you know, if there's some way to put something about that in the company's plan to possibly reach out those, uh, with their grant line.
Like something as simple as a sidewalk.
Yeah, but that's, that's, that's part of the detail, the first thing would be to, to look at the whole thing and say, okay, what can we do to, uh, improve this environment for the businesses to locate here or to improve their existing buildings or whatever? I mean, we need to really look at that as a business corridor, I mean, the ordinance kind of points to it, we wanna encourage people, we all, people coming to the plant and going, you know, we all have to improve what they, you know, help them get approved and all that stuff.
We took a shot at that tonight with Trinkin', in theory. And so I think we're, we're stepping into showing, uh, how we are business friendly in the business community section. And I think there, you know, well, what's going into that, the car repair place that's down that just sold? They're cleaning up, they put on a new.
A car repair place.
Is it another car?
But under, under, on page five.
We just, we could, I'm telling you, I have more per capita, but it's at, at an hour.
You know, under a con. If, if there could be, uh, like maybe an intermediate or a long-term, uh, you know, bullet paper that would say something like, you know, uh, study the, uh, you know, further study the, uh, economic corridor between Bath and Brunswick, the on old US Route One, blah, 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 and whose responsibility.
But it says you've got the last thing, you could, we can put the add up, it says participate in any regional economical development planning efforts.
That's really different though. This is something the town, the town.
But we can add to that, you can add to that, to, to encourage local business growth.
You know, along that corridor, though, I think we need to specifically point to that as our business corridor.
That's all we got.
Right.
But, but here, but here's, but that also plays into what Darlene, you know, on the, on the long-term, the third one. It says that, that, um, to get grants for, um.
Absolutely.
For strategies for the, for the, um.
But I think we, if there's some way to specifically talk about that, old route one or state road, or whatever we wanna call it.
It's gonna have lots of traffic soon.
Yeah, yeah, you know, and, and put that in there.
But will it though?
Well, we at least have to, you know, this is, this is actually eye in the sky stuff. What did you say, Jerry?
No, I was talking to Darlene about, uh, she said there's gonna be increasing, increasing traffic.
Oh. I'll, I'll, yeah, yeah. Yeah, at least we're taking it.
I, 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 um.
But if there's some way we could add something about that specific corridor in that area.
Study and explore the expansion of business along Route One.
Infrastructure, let's see, what can I say? Add perhaps further study old US Route One corridor for infrastructure and other enhancements to encourage investment in this business corridor. Did you get that?
No.
Can you email that?
Slower.
Study and explore.
Further study old US Route One corridor. About infrastructure.
Hold on, I do not do shorthand. Further study US Route, it's not the US Route One corridor, that's the highway, we can't do that.
I said old route.
All, all, all state roads.
Or state road, we're gonna use, we're gonna use state road.
Old state road.
Okay, further studying state road corridor.
About infrastructure and other enhancements. To encourage investment.
Investment and business.
In this business corridor.
Investment and business.
In this business corridor, or something like that. Because it's a, I think it's, I think we're roughly primed to, you know, uh, and, you know, sidewalks, uh.
I see people walking on this road every single time.
Yeah.
So, but there's, even on various mail, I think, you know, we should try getting grants to put a bike lane in on various, because there's tons of bike riders in various mail that have.
And they do, they go down across the point, they go downhill roads, and they come back various mail.
But there's, various mail.
Or sometimes they go down various mail to cars.
Yeah, and still people bike it, so we might as well.
So I, I think we should look for a grant for that.
Yeah, embrace it.
They're humoring me.
I'm not humoring you, I think they got, yeah.
I think we could, well, okay, I'm trying to.
I, I agree with you, I'm not humoring you.
I think the key, like Darlene said, is getting sewer, like eventually right through West Bath.
Well, that's, that's one of the reasons why we have smaller, and it's not necessarily car repair. I think that we have a lot of car repair, because that's what's always been there. And someone moves out, someone moves in, it's easier. They've got lifts and all that kind of stuff. I mean, and, and I think, I think that you're not gonna get bigger places until you have sewer, and, and I mean, Kirkers Lot is big, it looks like you could put something big there, but they can't.
Could you save the number of employees?
Dig the hole in the ground.
But I thought there was, there was, there was a, there is a grant for cleanup for that, from the state, to clean up Kirkers Facility.
They're not gonna do it, they got a parking lot. Or do they? I don't know.
They gotta add more pay.
Anyway, okay, so we'll add that one. Long term, I've got long term for select board and the planning board to look into further study state road corridor for infrastructure and other enhancements to encourage investment in the business corridor.
I like it.
Once too many corridors, I'll do something to.
I said business area.
Business area.
Start with corridor and end with area.
I gotcha.
Corridor and corridor. Could you just say that there's some commercials on?
Well.
You don't, I don't know who, yeah, do you wanna load it to that?
Business area is probably, implies.
Not just that, yeah.
When it comes to doing the ordinances to do any of this, so, so this is a roadmap, this is not legal.
I got you.
We have to do this, this is a roadmap.
Yeah.
So.
If I were granted to do something along state road, we already had in here that, that's part of my confidence in planning.
Sure.
Right.
I got you.
So then it's.
That's what I'm saying, doesn't it make sense to have a bigger area?
I think it would include all of that. I mean, there's no access from.
It's not just state roads, though.
There's no access from, uh, US Route One anyway.
Music corridor.
Not yet, but there won't be some access, hold it up at that old, after that tower.
That's gonna access to the tower from the highway. There can't be any.
The, uh, proposal.
Are they proposing access to the tower from the highway?
Yeah.
No.
No.
Yes, they have, it's in their plans.
No, it's off of, it's, the tower's up by the, um, transfer station.
Up where?
At the transfer station. I don't really know what I'm talking about.
It's in behind that, and the access and the power is coming off US Route One.
No, it's control access, something they can.
It's, they're not, it's not.
I've looked at their plan.
Alright, so we'll, we'll fight them.
It's just, they've applied for, they've applied for, um, to break that control back.
Really? Wow.
Yeah.
Interesting.
For once in a lifetime, I mean, once it's built, well, how frequently are you gonna use it? That's ridiculous.
No, I've heard other stories that there's gonna be, uh, building one with it too.
We granted them a parcel for a tower, we're not giving them the land for a building.
So I talked, I talked to a guy the other day, and he said this future, I said, talked about the tower, and he said, yeah, and they're gonna build a building after. This shit comes out.
I can tell you that.
He's a free C.
That we, that conversation maybe for another time.
So, uh, so we got into section five?
Five dash three, is anybody having anything above the table? These are all just stats, West Bath labor unemployment, estate.
I'll do the.
And then.
I'll set.
Sound, any good?
Okay.
Five four is transportation. We are, four, West Bath residents travel between ten to fourteen minutes to work. To name travels, words, travel. West Bath residents travel between ten to fourteen minutes, travel to work.
Minutes to work, take out.
Got it. Um, okay. Trends, anything else on five four?
I'll set.
I'm good.
Instead, instead of the second most resident, how about the second pool of residents? Like second.
Second most.
But the second.
Gap in the, the pool of residents, it's not the second most, which is a lot.
Well, it means that.
The second largest pool.
Second most number of residents, that just is so odd.
The second largest pool.
Well, you could just say the largest group, or what, or the largest group of residents from West Bath traveled between ten to fourteen, and the second largest group, one hundred eighty-six drive fifteen to nineteen.
Yep, something's off with that.
Yeah, okay, I have circled it. We'll redo that. I'm with you. Um, anything else on five four? Good catch.
Yep, I'm all set.
Alright, five five.
I'm good with five five.
This talks about the top of page, while sewer and water expansions are possible, it requires cooperation from the city of Bath's utility districts who do not see a feasible method of expanding utilities any further in the West Bath.
What's going on with the Brunswick Naval Area?
It's gone.
It's gone, but.
It's now.
They're developing, M R A develops it.
Even Tyler. Oh, wow.
Yeah, they actually had a ten-year, for businesses that moved there, a ten-year free tax zone.
So for a while, if you go out there and pick a building and say, I wanna make this out of a building, propose it to the.
M R A.
M R A, and if they like your plan, then pretty much, I'm not gonna say gave you the building, but, wow, pretty much gave you the building.
So now it's all spunky for it?
Like while it's, while it's, no, there's plenty of time.
No, but it's long, absolutely.
Go up there, get one.
Yep.
But you also have a ten-year tax free.
Yeah.
Right?
Flight, that's a pretty amazing story, like Flight Deck, if you go out there when they started that, I mean, that, they just rake in the cash now, you know?
Yeah, and I've got their pizza ovens and all that, they just.
Anything else on five five?
I'm good with five five.
We start talking pizza ovens.
Five five.
Okay.
We'll hear two seconds.
Are we all, are we all good with section five? Alright, it's five minutes to eight, we can either call it an eight, or we can decide to.
We could buy a service cam.
I think so.
We're on agriculture and forestry. Alright, if you look at the implementation action list, we don't have anything on the first page, you should flip it over. On the second page, we've got the second one down, ongoing consultant soil and water conservation district staff when developing any land use regulations pertaining to agricultural management practices, yes, you will do that, that is state required.
That all looks fine.
Yep, if we look at the section agriculture and forestry. Um, I don't know why he's highlighted timber harvest as defined by Maine Department of Agriculture Conservation Forestry, but I'm sure he'll let us know why he's done that.
We're thinking toward that, that name.
I guess, um, it's just basically talking about forestry, agriculture, average acres. They figure out, because our report to the state is wrong, did that ever get straightened out and fixed?
I don't know.
Because that's a nightmare. I don't know. I mean, told them about it three years ago, it's still wrong, so. And we're about to lose our assessment.
So I'm good with six, one, two, three, four.
Same.
Six, six two is just stats, um. Yeah, here we go. Changed land use, twenty-three total. Three, three, nine, five, yeah. Alright, and six, three, you said you guys were all set with?
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
Good.
Alright, let me get a little bit on six four. Alright.
Water natural resources.
Done with six? We wanna.
Section seven?
Section seven, water and natural resources. I don't know, why is this critical, natural and water resources?
You said you were doing all the sections with these.
But there, it's got the word critical versus.
Right, I don't know why the titles are different.
Just cause that, it just says water.
The, the titles on these two are different, just for example. Okay. Okay, let's see, top of it.
What does it do with a master, I think?
On the implementation. First one, ongoing developed standards for filling the loophole soils or blasting to include volume traffic. Um, we have an excavation one, I think, but we'll have to just check on it, I guess.
So, but the, does the planning board review? A blasting permit?
No.
It says that here they do. Require any permit for blasting invalid and has to be reviewed by the planning board for insurance or reissuance, right, the permit.
No, it says that we. It says that we. Right. We gotta check on that. I don't think we even have blasting permits.
I never recall ever doing anything with blasting.
And I don't recall if blasting is us, it must be us, because if it's not on the CEO's list, then it's us. I'm not sure it's ever been.
But the responsibility shown is because.
Well, there is a perm, there is an application, they hit, there is a notification, because you have to notify your neighbor within some, we. But that's, that's not.
Only if you're within three hundred feet of them.
I don't, but I don't think it's a permit, I just think it's a.
If we don't have requirement for a permit, we should.
I agree.
Irregardless of how far it is from the home's house. Having been someone who was woken up by blasting on the same ridge of ledge that our house sits on.
Or had damages in water or feed into your well.
Complaining, we were told that they didn't have to notify us, because it wasn't within three hundred feet.
That's a state thing, I think.
Um, it doesn't have an asterisk, but.
No, but the notification.
The notification, yes, the state, yes.
We can, we can, yeah.
Have fun with that.
Yeah, so the second one is ongoing participate in regional planning management regulatory efforts around shared critical and important natural resources, sure. Turn the page, that was a lot in this one, isn't it? Turn the page, planning board at the top, ongoing with a star, review current in main department environmental best practices for soil erosion and water quality. We always make sure that they're doing their erosion control, at least when they come with a application.
The road commissioner?
Road commissioner?
I thought that two is involved in that.
Oh, yeah, because the road commissioner has to oversee that sort of thing, because they open up the roads, they're supposed to have erosion control too.
Maintenance of public and private roads.
Yes.
Road commission may involve.
Yes, at the very bottom, we've got a short-term thing, use mapping provided by, beginning with habitat program to identify areas vital to various plant, animal species, remaining undeveloped open spaces, and to update resource protection zones. This one I asked for the code enforcement officer to be added to that, so that we weren't the holders of the maps and responsible for doing that. How do all of you feel about that?
Which one is it?
The bottom one on page sixteen.
Yes, absolutely.
We discussed that idea.
He was actually listed on this map over here for that, hold on, he actually was.
Sorry, that's, you were gonna add a rule?
Code enforcement.
Yes.
He, but he, we, he was assigned to that in another area.
The other, on the other, next page. Is that a sheet?
No, previously, he was on it also. Should be. He's on, he's on agriculture and forestry, he's the main natural area program, the main department of fisheries, he's on that. And he was on, so he should be on all these, yeah, have mapping.
Right, anything that has to do with mapping.
Yep.
I think that it should be part of the job description to keep them updated and to check them on applications to make. He sees them long before we do.
So whoever, who's running the master on this?
I am.
That font and the third one is different than all the other fonts.
The font and the third one.
Oh.
Work with the, oh, yeah, that's from my magazine.
I've seen that in different fonts.
Yeah, two.
And the size of the font, just kind of.
Just have them, they should, they could easily go through the whole, highlight the whole document, and you get one font.
Yeah.
That's, I recommend that.
Control.
Here we go. Top, top of page seventeen, there's the CEO.
Yep.
Amend the land use ordinance to require maps to consider, so that could be the CEO for that one, maybe that's, oh, good, buggered up. CEO doesn't amend the land use ordinance. Planning board in town, so we, okay.
So bring that to the end of the one.
Yeah, alright, so, second one down, develop an urban impaired stream watershed management or mitigation plan that will promote continued development or redevelopment without further stream degrid.
Degradation.
Degradation. Degradation. That is a state one, so is the next one.
And the next, and the next.
Application for the doc, documentation from state and federal agencies such as main natural area programs, main department of inland fisheries, broadway, et cetera, et cetera. Main historic preservation commission, there will be no impact on habitats of animals, birds, fish, plants, critical natural resources.
Shouldn't that be CEO also? That's all your maps?
Are they talking about just subdivision states? Are they talking about just subdivision stand?
No. It says applications to planning board, all of them, I believe, he should be on that one.
Wow.
Well, is he the one requesting, not really, it's the application that requests it, which is.
For them, but he's gonna, he's gonna be like documentation, he'll be like, hey, you're in, uh, main historic preservation area.
Right, but I think this just means it needs to be in the, it's not gonna hurt to put it on there, but I think it just means to make sure that it's in the application itself, and then.
But who's gonna validate it, and is it not?
He is. True. Who's the one with the one before is, use mapping provided.
It always said habitat.
Habitat areas vital. No, it's not really the same thing, is it?
No.
Okay, so we'll add CEO to the third one, um, number four, consider incorporating low-impact development standards in the applicable ordinances, sure. Last one is not us.
It is five one on the next page.
And there was more on the next page. So, short-term, identify the map areas at risk from water pollution. That's us, review land use and development ordinances regarding restrictions on the type and size of subsurface waste disposal, and identified sensitive water pollution prone areas of concern.
That'd be kind of meeting.
Um. Because you're developing ordinances, and to have the ordinances approved, I think, I think the fact this says develop ordinances.
Yeah.